Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our chairman is running a few minutes late, so we're getting started with the meeting. The chairman has requested the minutes be tabled, so can I have a second on that? Yes, we'll do it.
A second?
I made a motion. Yeah.
Is there a reason?
There was no time to review them. Okay, taking attendance Rita Bettino, Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Jennifer Fons, Luke Kaufman, Mike Morrow, Maria Norton.
Here.
Kimberly Norton.
Here.
Hillary Orman.
Here.
Christina Ross here, Eric Hunum.
Here.
Penny Young.
Here.
Jennifer Sonas.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Okay, I'd like to move item number seven on the agenda, the appointment of Bill Bradley for a three-year term ending in December 1st, 2024. Mr. Bradley, would you like to say something? You want to come to the podium?
Just move out so I can be a little bit closer to you all. So I guess.
Yes. Okay.
Excited about this opportunity, potential opportunity. I know you, I think you have some background information on me, but I think some of the key highlights, 30-year resident of the town, married, we raised our kids here. I've spent most of my professional career in the private sector, in the finance area, but with specific sort of focus in the treasury function, which really kind of touches an awful lot of different things. And I've been a global treasurer for a number of companies, including one stint, which was, I don't know, for 12 years or so, with a very large company, which had, gave me tremendous exposure to both audit committees, internal audit, the internal audit function, what are the right processes and controls that are needed to run an organization properly, what to look out for. I've certainly seen a lot, I've done a lot, I've got a background in both cash management, debt financing, you know, defined benefit, defined contribution plans, corporate insurance, and I think I've got a pretty good background to add value to the audit committee. I think my perspective would be very, very helpful. You're right, I'm not a CPA, but I'm reasonably fluent in US GAAP and IFRS, so it's not like I'd be coming up, starting from zero to, you know, become more familiar with government accounting. So I could certainly make that as an undertaking, but I don't see it as any kind of hurdle, not being, you know, fluent in sort of the government accounting, which is different than US GAAP and IFRS. With respect to, you know, audit committees, I've typically attended and participated in, you know, for the two companies where I was a global treasurer, every single audit committee. And so I'm very well-versed in, you know, how should people be thinking about risk management? What are the types of internal audit plans set each year? You know, we would typically have, the internal audit team would come up with sort of, here's how we're going to scope it out for the year, management would look at it, the audit committee would weigh in and say, we really think you also ought to look at this. And in my background as a treasurer, I certainly leaned on internal audit all the time of like, look, we have processes and policies, can you guys just go make sure that the people over here are doing them? I very much believe sort of the three key things to get it right are sort of people, processes, and systems. To be fair, I'm not sure where the town of New Canaan sits today in terms of, you know, I believe a lot of progress has been made over the last 10 years, but how do you continually improve things? And I know that one of the objectives or goals for the audit committee is to help the town bodies engage an external firm to do, I guess, sort of an internal audit survey, if you will. So I think scoping of that is going to be really key. I believe they've received a couple of RFPs, but I certainly think I could help out with that review process, having, having kind of had a lot of that exposure, working with, with internal audit teams. So I'm going to stop right there, and if you have any questions, feel free.
Any questions?
Bill, what would you look to, knowing what you do about our town in the area of risk management? What would you, where would you suspect the fruital?
Sure. Well, I think, you know, risk means a lot of different things, right? It can mean accounting risk, it can mean financial risk. I think the first thing would be, and again, things may be completely buttoned up here, does a company have a, does a company, does a town have a good set of policies and procedures? And then are people adhering to them? You know, how does it deal with a vendor database? How does it deal with petty cash? How does it deal with, you know, does the town, do any of the employees have P cards or credit cards? And I think getting a handle on sort of what policies may or may not be documented and procedures, and I'm not, it's, you know, early days, so I don't know where that is. It would be interesting to take a look possibly at the defined benefit plan. I know that New Canaan is in the fortunate position of being overfunded, I believe, on an aggregate basis.
Close.
Close, okay. I'm looking at last year's stated, but.
No, I mean, overfunded, depending on the assumptions that you.
There's many of the assumptions.
And not, not, it's not like triple funded, it's.
No, it's, it's a little bit over. And so I think I could just help kick the tires, I mean, pension accounting, you know, it's very technical, typically you'll have an actuary who helps assist with some of that, but I think, you know, some of the pension, the insurance plans, and then just getting a feel for the pacing and the rhythm, how comfortable everyone feels with like the monthly reporting. You guys get a monthly reporting, right? Or at least you get highlights of it. And it would be good to learn, you know, what's a little bit behind the curtain to get, to generate that information for you. So I'm going to kind of half-bag off because I need to sort of see what's there, and, but I am certainly a believer in ongoing continuous improvement, even if, you know, everyone gets an A right now, which, so.
Have you had the opportunity to meet with some of the members of the present committee?
Of, of, no, well, I'm, I'm speaking to Rob on Thursday, and I've had a quick discussion with Mary Cody as well, so I watched last month's video.
That'd scare you off.
No, no, actually, I think, I think the, I think the outsourcing and having somebody, an outside firm come in and do this sort of internal audit review periodically is like, that's pretty key. Because it's hard for a town of this size to have on a, this is my personal view, and I hope I'm not going against anything that you all feel, at least without having full knowledge, but it's hard to have a full-time internal audit staff. You probably wouldn't need like three people to do it right, if you want to have a full scope for it. And so that's a lot of fixed costs, so it might, so the idea of periodically just having an outside firm come in with a small army of people, and they can quickly bang out and take a look at a lot of stuff, and just doing that periodically, that sounds like a good way to go. So that's just my current view, and I could be changed, possibly, my view could change based upon if I get into it a little bit more, but, so.
Maria?
I kind of remember, I don't know, maybe 10 years ago, the town of New Canaan, maybe it was more, did an audit, and I feel like it included the Board of Ed, and it didn't just look at financial stuff, it looked at processes, processes and roles.
Totally, yeah.
That's what I'm wondering, would you support that?
It's got to be broad, no, it has to be broadly done, right? And so, you know, when I think of audit, there are two things. One is, is there just silly accounting mistakes? That's no, in no way, shape, or form fraud. Either they're, there was an accent on how they entered something, or they just didn't have the right accounting entry, and that is something that, you know, you have to be at a level platform, and that is part of an audit review. The second part of it is sort of the fraud piece of it. And at least coming from the private sector, it can run the gamut from literally where you're truly getting cash out for yourself. You know, that's why I think like, looking at the master vendor database, and you hear these stories, and I've seen it done, people set up these shell companies, and they become, you know, the vendors, like their cousin Eddie who doesn't do anything for them, right? So there's that. And then there's something a little less direct, and you will definitely see this in the corporate sector, you probably won't see it so much in the, in the government, but there's always pressure to hit your annual budget, right? Your annual plan, are you hitting your revenue, or are you hitting your EBITDA, or what it may be? And so you'll have people who might cut corners to hit those budget numbers, and it indirectly may benefit them because it might impact their bonus, right? So, yeah, no, I think it's fair, because you have to look at the operational processes, it's not just auditing.
Right.
You know, is this the right way to do something from an accounting standpoint, that's my view.
Any other questions?
Well, first of all, thank you for offering to come forward. I'm just curious, what compelled you to want to do this?
Sure. So I'm currently semi-retired, and doing a little bit of part-time consulting, and for 30-plus years, it's been sort of pedal the metal with my jobs, and I've not had the time or the luxury. In hindsight, I probably should have forced myself to do it. So I've just not had, and now I'm at a place where I can kind of give back a little bit, so I thought it would be a nice thing to do if something like this came up.
I'd just like to make a comment. Hi, we had a chance to speak, it's Kim Norton. I just wanted to say thank you for stepping up, like Rita said. And also, I do think it's interesting to have someone on the committee that's not a CPA. Your background as a treasurer, I think, would add to looking at those processes and kind of checks and balances, the way work streams are done, and just communicating with the budget and with us in terms of, you know, where the money is spent. So just wanted to make that comment.
Eric, did you want to say?
Yeah, I also had an opportunity to speak with Bill this week, and looking at the requirements for membership or participation on the audit committee, the job is to assist the town bodies in doing five things, and I don't see anything in Bill's record that would inhibit him from being able to fulfill those responsibilities. And I enjoyed chatting with you, and I also appreciate your willingness to stand up and serve and give back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no more questions, can I have a second to the nomination? Kim? Okay, all in favor? To you next? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bill.
Congratulations, Bill.
Thank you. And thank you for adjusting the agenda.
Members of the public are welcome to speak. To the town council, an agenda topic scheduled for review and a vote, speakers are requested to provide their name, street address, and comments will be limited to two to three minutes, subject to the total number of speakers. Would anybody like to come up?
Good evening, my name is Bart Cott, I live at 28 Conrad Road. So there was something on the agenda, I believe, page 14, which mentioned a roundabout. Didn't say on there that it was Conrad Road, but my wife and I have been in discussions with Tiger Man over a year and a half about solutions to the problem of speed and volume of traffic on the street, and that was one of the things that he had mentioned, so just, you know, if that is what, you know, was going to be talked about on the agenda, we're just kind of wondering, you know, what additional funding he's looking for, because there's already studies that have been done. We have printouts from him of different types of roundabouts going back to 2021, so, but, and there's been engineering studies, but we see pictures, but we've never seen any printout of what they think it's going to do. We, you know, a couple of families on the street there, we're not really convinced that a roundabout is going to, you know, provide a solution to either of those problems, the, the volume of cars, and certainly not the speed from Wiffle Tree to South Avenue. There is a speed sentry right in front of our house. Routinely, cars are all, you know, always above the speed limit, with some of them getting up to 55 miles an hour coming down the street towards that intersection. And right now, the police, there's one, it's a three-way intersection down there, and there's, there's a stop sign at Wiffle Tree heading up towards South Avenue, and then the other streets, there's a temporary stop sign that the police put in for us, which I think is, you know, at least some help, because cars, even if they don't completely stop, they're for sure slowing down. But I know that you guys are really just about the budget part of it, so we're just kind of wondering if, if this is more money to study the same one solution, you know, or is he really looking at other things that might, you know, provide better solutions on the street? All right, thanks.
Could I just make a comment?
Sure.
Bart, I want to thank you for coming forward and making this public to the town council. I live on Gertie's Road. Gertie's Road has considerable speeding ongoing all the time, a crazy amount of traffic coming up in the morning and going home in the evenings, and I am, I'm in full support of exploring other options for slowing the traffic and reducing the amount of traffic on both Gertie's Road and Conrad. I am not convinced a rotary is the best solution, and I appreciate your coming forward and making your comments, no, thank you.
Hi, my name is Janelle Sinacori. I also live on Conrad Road. Again, I saw, we noticed in the, in the agenda that there's traffic calming or talk about a roundabout. Didn't specifically say the street, but if it does happen to be Conrad, based on one sketch I saw, it's not obvious to me that the curve going into the roundabout will slow traffic. I'm not an expert in this, but looking at the picture and standing on the road, so I'd be curious to, since Hardesty in Hanover was already hired, I'd be curious to hear what are the alternate options they came up with. There's a whole list of traffic calming measures on the New Canaan website, so of those, and they explored, like what are some of the pros and cons of them? The cars aren't just magically getting on Conrad, clearly they're coming through Gertie's. So whatever solution can be found for one, hopefully should help, help both. I believe the traffic light was adjusted not that long ago. We had spent a lot of time talking about that with Tiger and the Police Department in the prior year. Thank you.
Janelle, can I have your last name?
Sinacori, S-I-N-A-C-O-R-I. And what's your address? Could you just say that? 91 Conrad.
Thank you very much. Anybody else, Tucker?
Not that I have, no one else.
Okay, thank you.
Everyone's running late, back in action. Okay, we'll move on to agenda, agenda item number four, the Banco Pool parking lot. Approval of a special appropriation request in the amount of $286,330 plus a contingency of $43,000 for a total project cost of $329,330 with Burns Construction for the paving of the Banco Pool parking lot.
First off, thank you very much. So we're in the interesting situation whereby the monies for the Banco Pool are in the fiscal budget that you're going to be approving, which would make it, you know, now, we're needing to do the work to complete it before the pool opens, if you will, May 31st. So we're asking for the monies that were going to be allocated in the fiscal budget coming forward to be retroactive to this year, so we can actually then complete the work prior to the pool opening, because it would be not in our best interest to pave it in September after everyone's used it, and then put it fallow for six months, or wait, and then, you know, we lose the, lose the year, and so that's the overall thought. As far as the, the construction, what have you, we went out to bid, Sluckman approved the contract. Contractor's a very good contractor, they have very good men working for them, and we're confident in the, that they'll be able to do this work in a timely manner and finish. It's just a question of timing of monies whereby, you know, we're looking at different fiscal years and where we need it to be applied to, if you will. Get all that right?
Yeah, it's, it's the use of the fund balance. So instead of budgeting it in '25, which is the original, we're moving it up for the authorization to use the fund balance now, so we can start it now. Otherwise, Tiger would have to wait till July 1st to start the project.
So it'll all come from the pool fund?
It's all coming from the pool fund, fund balance, yeah.
So having the funds accessible in July really means you wouldn't be able to do it till the fall, and then it would be sitting there until there's like the lobster fest, or.
Yeah.
Yeah, Christmas trees getting there, and then it would, that we wouldn't plow it, it would sit on the snow, yeah.
Yep, that's exactly it. It's just timing.
So will that be subtracted from the budget then?
It's, it wasn't a budget item per se, it won't be put into the pool budget. We have it as an item to be put in the pool budget to use the, to draw down the fund balance, or it won't go in, and now we're just going to do the authorization for this year.
I see, thank you.
I have a question, Tiger. Was this project bid it out?
Yes, it was.
So if it was, why is there a contingency? Because the bid should also include a contingency. The contractor.
Okay, that we don't, it's not a guaranteed maximum price. We bid on it, we, we have been bidding our paving similar to what the Connecticut DOT does, and similar to what every other municipality does on an estimated unit cost, all right? So an estimated quantity. So therefore, the contingency is necessary, because I put in, you calculate out, for an example, you calculate out the number of tons of pavement they'll be in, right? So we're asking them to mill out two inches and put back two inches. That two inches actually, per specification, has a tolerance, because you can't be perfect with putting it out straight on a two-inch mat. So there's a tolerance there. It's a half an inch per inch tolerance. If he stays within tolerance, technically he's put in more material or a little bit less. If he puts in a little bit less, I'm paying by the ton, I pay by the ton, I put in a little bit less. If it's a little bit fat, say two and a quarter inches, that quarter inch is more than my estimated quantity, which would then drive up my cost past my contract amount, which allows, which, that would run into a contingency. But we get, we get what we pay for, right? We get two and a quarter inches. You know, we try to make sure that he stays at the two, he does a very good job of staying at the two, and then in the end, we do what's called a yield calculation, whereby you take the square yardage, multi, you know, and then you back-solve in the tonnage, the square yardage versus a, you know, a conversion of 115 pounds per square yard inch, and find out how many inches he's off by. And as long as he's within the tolerance, then he gets paid that, or he gets paid up to that tolerance, if you will. If he put in more than that, you say he just wanted to go really fat and put in three and a half inches, I don't pay him three and a half inches, I pay him up to the tolerance that's allowed. So we have a, you know, we have a cap on that as well.
There's no curving?
There is curving.
No, new curving?
Yes, there's granite curbing going in at present.
And is striping included in this price?
Yes, it's a unit price for striping, you know, separate unit price, the safety markings would probably be their subcontractor. Everyone quoted safety markings, so I think it's around $7,500 as a unit, that's separate. So to give you an idea, we break out every item, so we break out mobilization, maintenance, and protection of traffic, asphalt, curbing, blacktop curbing, granite curbing, concrete sidewalk, the handicap ramps, striping, and then flagger control, if we need flagger control. So that's all broken out onto the bid, and then he bids out accordingly.
It's all in?
It's all in, right. It's all in, and then if I need it based upon tolerance, yes, if you will, or if there's a change somewhere, somewhere out there.
Is there a completion guarantee? Now, we're saying we're pooling forward, and we want to have this, and if we wait, it's going to happen in July, and in July we'll have the lobster. So like, you said, you said they're very good people and very good company.
Yeah, it was written into the contract and written to the specifications, so it was, not only was it in the advertisement that this was the timeframe that they would have to build it in, that they actually had to have it constructed by May 23rd for a week, just in case, afloat for rain or what have you, or else for us just to, you know, we want to do some additional work at the pool prior to opening. So it was written in the advertisement for bid, then it was on the bid spec, and in the specification of the contract.
Very risky, like, hey, we're going to meet it in this very quick timeframe, and if you don't, how's that look for the pool? How's that look for the experience of the, of the town?
It would necessarily, the.
So like, we're saying, hey, this is going to be pushed off a year, let's reverse that mindset and say, hey, what if they don't do it? How's that going to look for this year?
The, well, the, the problem that I have is that if, like, if we pushed it off, okay, the, I'll run into a different, I might run into a different technique. Right now, the pool's 20 years old, right? So that pavement is about 20 years old. If I let her go another year, and she starts to fracture and the base gets contaminated, meaning that it starts to get wet and saturated and a problem, then I get into a reclaim. Right now, I'm at a mill and pave, very, it's about $20 a square yard. If I get to a reclaim and pave, which I'm right at that edge of the limit, I jump to a $60, $63 per square yard. So the, the amount of money will triple, if you will, that's necessary to complete the project. If we complete it this year, you'll have usage of it, and everything will be nice, versus waiting, and then.
You used the word if. I'm saying, like, the scare tactic of, hey, it's going to be triple the cost if we don't do this now, and if something happens, it's, you know, that's the, hey, we need to do this because of, I'm saying, what if it doesn't work out to the exact timing that we say?
If it doesn't work out to the exact timing, all that would happen at that point in time, say he milled it, and he didn't get to pave it before May 31st when the pool opens, right? So they're, they're driving on a milled surface, still a pavement surface, but just a milled surface, similar to what? Some, well, you probably had to do that yesterday, right? Because I paved your road today. So the thought being is that that would happen, and then we would ask him to come in either early, you know, prior to, say, the pool opening.
I'm just trying to see the field.
No, it's, yeah, no. It's all good, I can understand that, but yeah, they would be on a milled surface. It wouldn't really affect the poolgoer, if you will, if we didn't make that 20, the 23rd date or the 31st date, it wouldn't really affect the poolgoer. We're not going to close the pool, we're not going to close, we're not going to do any of that. It would literally be, they're driving on a milled surface at that time, where they're driving on the surface itself, we'd mill it, pave it, and they would be inconvenienced while they're driving in and driving out, but they still have the adjacent parking lot that we could utilize for that time. So we wouldn't be looking at closing the pool or anything like that. I just wanted it to be done beforehand, so that there was no.
Obviously, that would be the target. I said, what if we didn't hit that target? Is there a direct impact to, to the town? You're saying, basically, there's a little inconvenience of driving on a pavement that's not what you want, but it wouldn't affect the project, and it wouldn't affect the poolgoers?
No, it would not.
Thank you.
Is there any other, any kind of warranty on this? I don't know if these companies do a warranty on a parking lot, like if a curb falls apart, or, you know, you know, I've seen that with those, you know, sometimes people drive into it, but that's a different reason, but is there any, do they stand behind their work?
They have to stand behind their workmanship, yeah. They stand behind their workmanship for a year, approximately a year. Curbing is a little bit of a different story. This is granite curbing, so it's not blacktop curbing, right? So the granite curbing shouldn't be an issue at all, if you will. Somebody drives into it and fractures it, that's a whole different set of circumstances. So, but it's, say, a sidewalk panel broke, if you will, right? Sidewalk panel cracks and breaks, he's coming back to fix that on his own, right? So we have about a year's worth of that, and then at that point in time, then you get into wear and tear and maintenance, and people driving on it, things of that nature. So there's a, there's a point where he's completely responsible up until the point where we consider it substantially complete, okay? And substantial completion is exactly that. Have you, have you done everything minus punchless work? And if you have, then, then we pay accordingly. We hold back a 5% retainage for punchless work, and then at that point in time, he goes to the punchless work, and then he gets a completion date, if you will, and that helps him on his side for his contracts and with his bonding company and things, and that sets in that motion of, okay, now from this date, this time forward, you're on your warranty period. On, to date, I've had maybe, over the 20 years, I've had maybe one or two sidewalk panels break. I had two break on Main, Main Street back in 2012, contractor at that time, A&amp;J Construction came in and fixed it, and for the most part, haven't seen any problems with workmanship or quality, to that nature, where we actually had to enact a warranty or actually pull his bond or something of that nature, where we would, you know, see a gross deficiency, if you will.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Tiger?
Nothing else, mine.
I just have a question. In, in the 2024, 25 budget materials that we all got, there is an item listed, Public Works Administration Engineering, Banco Pool Parking Lots, project total $300,000.
That's right.
That is this project?
That's this.
And what's the difference between the 300 and the current number of 329, just?
Well, the bid came in at 286, 330.
Okay.
Okay, so that's really where, so we were just.
300 is what you were estimating, and then the bids came in.
Came in, right, came in just, just below what we were estimating, 300. We don't estimate in, I don't estimate in contingency. We use a contingency at that point in time. If, if the, if it had rolled forward and the budget was 300, the contingency at that point in time would be just under $14,000, because that's all I would have available. At present, since we have the monies, you know, we'd like to see the contingency a little bit more expansive, just in case. We don't utilize it unless we need it, and in this case, you know, the, I have two catch basin tops that I needed to replace, so it was $3,500, that's about where I'm at, you know, over at present. But I'll be saving some money on flagging and other areas. So I think, I think it's going to be a wash or pretty close to the two eighty-six, three thirty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Maria.
I don't know if it's on here, but I know you, you came here a few years ago about the playground, the adult fitness center.
Yeah.
And future playground. Is the fitness center part of Capital Project and what's the status of that?
Yes, and that was part of the previous appropriation, either last year or the year prior, four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So Selectmen just approved a series of contracts two weeks ago, approximately two weeks ago, to install the fitness area. The fitness areas, we have, we have a playground committee set up by Park and Rec, the Park and Rec Commission. So we have a playground committee. Individuals that had worked at the Mead Park Playground, if you will, wanted to tackle this one with us as well and actually help us fundraise for some additional amenities at the, at the area. We have a landscape architect who's helping us with a cohesive design of the entire area so that it all fits together. And then we're working with the playground consultant on the playground itself and then the fitness area itself. So the fitness area, since now they're bifurcated, they're separated, which we felt was much better, much better design, has been approved by the Board of Selectmen. And that'll come forward May, June. So they've ordered the materials, meaning they've ordered.
I just remember it was so dangerous. Was it removed?
It was not removed. It's still there. We've taken care of anything that was, if, if an item breaks, we remove that item at present, but it's still there.
Because I thought it was such a.
It's on its.
That was one of those, I think you were sort of referring to the, you know, it was an emergency, so we funded it, but.
Well, we've taken several of the items out, so that tells you right there that yes, you know, not every item is going to break at the exact same time, but we have already removed several of the units that were there prior. Have removed them, taken them out of service. So we're, you know, we're on borrowed time with the rest, if you will.
So there's no funding in this capital request for that? That's done?
That's done. That's correct.
And my second question was on the rotary traffic calming section.
It's later in the.
Oh, okay.
This isn't his first.
You're here for a while.
We'll hit that.
All right, all right.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Stick on this and then we'll, we'll definitely address that, no doubt.
Any other questions on the Banco parking lot issue? Once, twice? Anne? Is that a signal?
No, we're good.
All right, so we're good to go on that. All right, we have a motion then? Do we need a motion? Okay, so move with a second. Maria? Okay, any discussion on this motion as read earlier on Agenda Item Number Four for the Banco Pool Parking Lot? Any discussions? Having no discussion, we'll now take a vote. All in favor? Passes unanimously. The special appropriation is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, well, I was will stay there, right? Okay, so moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, Bond Authorization Amendments. Approval of amendments to the following previously approved bond authorizations presented by Anne Kelly Lentz and Tiger Man.
So we're asking to amend and add to the police station bonding. The reason being, in two thousand and eighteen, they'd done, you had done, or the board had done a, a bonding in terms of cell ta, not cell towers, the.
Communications.
Communications, thank you. Where the communications would, and at that time, we spent about two point two million dollars of what was in the plan at the time. And then the part that belonged to the police station was also in the plan, but not until the police station was going to be done because we didn't want to do the work twice. So that authorization, authorization was sitting there waiting for the time period of when the police station was going to undertake, which is now in place, but it's six years later, so that authorization is gone. So what we're looking to do is reauthorize that portion that they're moving the police station communication equipment off. So that we're just getting that authorization reauthorized and, and putting it in with the police station. The funding was there because it was bonded at that time. We just needed to reauthorize it again.
This the two hundred?
Just the two hundred. Yeah.
So we're, are we just amending like the date of the appropriation? Is that?
Yeah, we're, we're amending it from twenty-seven thousand, twenty-seven thousand, twenty-seven million five to twenty, twenty-seven seven.
Okay.
To take the authorization that I, that the, I'm closing down the authorization right now, so it will come before you at another point. Nobody can spend on it, but we need to move ahead with the police station to make sure they're, they're keep going.
And the two hundred thousand that was part of the whole communications package several, an administration ago. Is it, is it, are you just taking two hundred from one place and putting it in another? Or are we actually adding to the town's bonding?
No, we're, we're taking, we're reassigning the, we have the funds in place. So nothing can be done with those funds right now other than moving to another authorization. So once we have this in place, I'll move the funds underneath here.
At the risk of being pedantic and repetitive, we're not adding two hundred thousand dollars to the, to the bondedness of the town.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Is it twenty-seven five in this, in the correct fiscal year?
Well, we, we approved that. Was that a mid-year approval? I can't remember.
I thought that was.
That was last year.
Isn't that in the current year? I don't know.
No, that was, the, the police station's already been approved, so that was last year.
Yeah, last year, but is. So we don't need to change the fiscal year?
Oh, no, with capital, with the capital projects, we don't have to worry about the fiscal year it happens in. I do from the expenditure side, but not from your approval side. It's not a one-year budget.
Any other questions? All right, so just procedurally then, right, we're looking at our Agenda Item Number Five for Bond Authorization Amendments. Right, we have this language indented, blocked, resolution amending continues. And then we have the resolved language, points A and B, and then just kind of goes into something far. So let's just figure out what exactly you need us to say.
So you can either approve it as stated on the agenda and keep it as simple as that, or you would read out the block section on the top. Just the block section.
So it's sufficient, I guess legally, that we did, we can just approve this amended language of the indented section?
Yes.
Capitalized letters.
Yeah. Yes, that's the resolution.
And then we, the balance where it says resolve and it's point A and B, is not something we need to read into the record and, and approve?
No, just the top part.
All right, so let's get a motion. And the motion should be, say, I'll make a motion and then read this indented language and let's get a second.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Great, okay.
I'll make a motion for the resolution amending, resolution authorizing an appropriation of twenty-seven million five hundred thousand dollars for the police station twenty-two-three project and the financing of said appropriation by the town issuance of general obligation bonds of the town. Did I do that right?
Add a town instead of the issuance.
Oh, of the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed twenty-seven million five hundred thousand to increase such by two hundred thousand dollars.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Having no discussion, we'll now vote. All in favor? The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on. So this is where we now have an additional, additional amendments to discuss?
Yes, for the fire.
Correct?
So we had, we went out last year, we got a million dollars for the capital authorization. But the bids are coming in higher based on what motor is actually available. So the exposure is, is two hundred thousand that it, we could pay up to. So we're getting the authorization in place so he can move ahead with it because there is a timeline on that truck. It could come in lower. It just depends on what motor is available because some of them are going out possibly years. So, but right now the, the quotes that he's seeing is one point two. So we're looking for that amended authorization.
So it's a similar situation, sort of, in terms of increasing two hundred thousand dollars off of previous.
On a previous amendment. And I've, like I said, I'm currently in the process of analyzing all our projects to still continuously close them down. Old ones. We will have funding to cover this, so it will not be additional bonding needed. So we're closing down other projects that will be in front of it. We have the funding in place.
And who approves that? The Board of Finance or the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Finance comes forward when I bring forward the projects because I have to read, technically, we don't have to go in front of the boards, but we do for transparency to say we're closing down these projects and we're moving the money over here. So we can do that process and we bring it in front of the boards. So you can see what we're doing.
This is for a fire truck, you said?
Yes.
And the motor is what you're saying is?
The motor is the problem right now of when the bids were coming in, depending on which motor they can get.
Okay, thanks.
And you won't know until they actually go out to do the full purchasing and right now it could go over.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so same questions before. If we read the blocked capitalized language, that'll be sufficient for approving the amendment, correct?
Yep.
So if we can get someone to make the motion and read it out?
I'll make the motion. Eric. I move a resolution amending, quote, resolution authorizing an appropriation of one million dollars for the fire equipment twenty-two-three project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed one million dollars, unquote, to increase such by two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, do we have a second? Maria, okay. And any discussion? Having heard no discussion, we'll now move for a vote. All in favor? It's unanimous. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, next up. We're moving on to number six. Are we done with the amended?
We're done with the amended.
We are moving on to number six. Okay, great. All right, that closes out Agenda Item Number Five. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Six, Projects Appropriations and Bond Authorizations. Approval of the following projects, appropriations and bond authorizations. Anne Kelly Lentz, Tiger Man.
Open it up for questions on each, do you want questions on each project as we go through or how do you want to?
Yeah, why don't we just start up? We'll, we'll move expeditiously. Okay, so we'll start with the first one.
Anne provided a list of all the projects included.
The Agenda page numbers on the left. No, it's, it's this one.
Maybe we'll walk off that.
Yep.
Orderly. All right, so Information Technology Twenty Twenty-four Program. Okay, so you have RIT Hardware, Bond Authorizations ninety K. WAN Software Hardware is eighty thousand, cybersecurity mitigation fifty-five thousand for a total of two hundred twenty-five thousand. So that corresponds to Page Four. All right, so are there any particular questions on Information Technology Twenty Twenty-four Program and the two hundred twenty-five K that we were getting asked to authorize by a bond? Questions? No? Okay, so I think again, we'll just follow the form before. We'll read the indented capitalized language for the record. I will make a motion and vote, okay? So can someone take the lead on? Thanks, Maria.
It's the same language on this, right?
It should be, yes, yes.
This might be easier to read.
I'd like it to be the smallest font possible.
There's nothing we can class of that, so, you know.
Motion on the resolution authorizing and, oh, sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
Make a motion on the resolution authorizing an appropriation of two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for the Information Technology Twenty Twenty-four Project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Discussion?
Is this an annual?
It's around that amount that we have with the upgrades that he's doing. They're doing, they have done server upgrades, if you remember from last year. So now we're moving forward with the equipment upgrades that go with that.
Any other questions or discussion on this resolution? No? Okay, I will move to vote. All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to number six. I am going to read these numbers out only because we are creating a record. And also for the public, it will probably be, not make much sense if they don't understand what we're actually approving. So next up, Parking Twenty Twenty-four Program, New Permitting slash Ticketing Software Program, sixty-two thousand dollars. Are there any basic questions? If not, we'll just go on ahead and make the motion. Not, does someone like to make that motion?
Someone?
Christine, move second. Mike? Want to read it? Number two.
Resolution authorizing an appropriation of sixty-two thousand dollars for the parking of Twenty Twenty-four Project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed sixty-two thousand.
Any discussion? Having no discussion, we'll move to the vote. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the Fire Twenty Twenty-four Program, Staff Vehicle Addition, eighty thousand dollars. Can we have a motion? Anybody? So move. Tom? You got a second, anybody? Luke, seconds? If we could get the motion.
Tom, you want to read it?
I'm sorry. Resolution authorizing an appropriation of eighty thousand dollars for fire equipment. Twenty Twenty-four Project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars.
Any discussion? Having no discussion, we'll now move to vote. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Emergency Management Twenty Twenty-four Program. Motorola Radio Hardware and Software Update Agreement, one hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred twenty-six dollars. Can we have a motion?
I'll move to adopt resolution authorizing an appropriation of one hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred twenty-six dollars for the Emergency Management Twenty Twenty-four Project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred twenty-six dollars.
Second.
Read a seconds. Any discussion? Having no discussion, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on, Police Department Twenty Twenty-four Program, Police Vehicles One, fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Can we have a motion? Any, okay, so Penny makes the motion. Can we have a second?
Second.
Well, let's actually get that full motion.
Penny made the motion.
Resolution authorizing an appropriation of fifty-two thousand, five hundred, the police vehicle Two Thousand Twenty-four Project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed fifty-two thousand, five hundred.
Okay, any discussion? Having no discussion, we'll now vote. All in favor? The motion passes unanimously.
Who seconded?
All right, DPW Town Buildings Twenty Twenty-four Program. We have Town Hall Repair and Upgrades of sixty-five thousand, Town Hall Annex HVAC Replacement sixty-five thousand, Town Hall Annex Roof Replacement eighty-five thousand, Waveney House Abatement two hundred thousand, Waveney House Water and Waste Lines Replacement three hundred thousand, Waveney Park Lamp Post Replacement Project two hundred eighty thousand, Erwin Park Mean House Roof Engineering and Painting Repairs, Painting and Repairs, one hundred fifty thousand, Nature Center Visitor Center slash Greenhouse Boiler Conversion to Propane Oil Tank Removals, one hundred fifty thousand, Train Station DOT Requested Repairs, one hundred fifty thousand, Utility Van Maintenance Operations, sixty-five thousand, Waveney Repairs and Upgrades, one hundred eighty thousand, Nature Center Repairs and Demo, one hundred twenty-five thousand, Town Buildings Repairs and Upgrades, one hundred eighty-five thousand for a total of two million dollars. Who would like to make that motion? Eric makes the motion. Penny, a second? Okay, Penny seconds. So Eric, if you could read the, the motion.
I'll move to adopt the resolution authorizing an appropriation of two million dollars for the DPW Town Buildings Two Thousand Twenty-four Project and the general obligation bonds of the town and notes, I'm sorry, by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed two million dollars.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah. So hypothetically, if we were to decide not to want, to decide not.
So hypothetically, if we were to decide not to want, to decide not to do one of these items, that's still possible. We just have bond authorization at this point.
Right. I don't bond until, we don't typically bond until, it's a reimbursement, it's in arrears. So if we don't do it, I won't be asking for it.
So if we wanted to take one of these off the list, that's still possible?
Yep.
Uh, I have a question to Tiger. Does this include any ADA upgrades or redos?
No, on the, for item twelve or for the page twelve for the DPW town buildings?
Yeah.
No. I think we can do it at a later time.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I have just a very quick comment question and I'm agnostic about this, but are, by by approving this and approving the Erwin Park main house, are we signaling that that is a building that wants to be kept? I mean, are if we're, are we replacing the roof with the intention of continuing to use that building or is there a further plan for it? I just wonder, you know.
I think that's a great point.
It's just a question.
No, I agree with that. I was thinking the same exact thing.
Yeah.
You beat me to it.
Very fast.
Yes, you are.
So the, it's, we're not replacing the roof this year.
Okay.
That's in a, that's in a subsequent year. This would be to evaluate the roof and then some exterior repairs. The thought from the, from the Board of Finance was to nurse the building along for a year, if you will, while we make a determination as to its overall status.
Perfect. That's, that's a good answer because I want to make sure we're not going to replace the roof just to decide in a year to tear it down.
No.
To the extent we're doing engineering work to figure out how sustainable the building is. That's a great idea.
I think it's great forward thinking. I think to bring that up is great forward thinking to make sure we're on the same page and knee jerk reaction, hey, it needs to be replaced. But then, hey, we're not going to use it anyway, so we shouldn't have done that. So excellent point.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the discussion I had.
Okay, any further discussion on this motion? Having no further discussion, we will now vote. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to DPW administration and engineering twenty twenty-four program. Pavement, pavement management program, three million dollars. ADA improvements townwide, two hundred fifty thousand. Sidewalks improvements anew, seven hundred fifty thousand, traffic calming rotary intersection improvements, one hundred fifty thousand. Pavement preservation, two hundred fifty thousand. Drainage, one hundred thousand. Lakeview Avenue culvert reconstruction engineering, two hundred thousand. Lakeview Avenue culvert reconstruction, construction, two million dollars. Parking lot, North Railroad Lot at Elm Street Station, two hundred fifty thousand, intersection parcel studies and improvements, one hundred fifty thousand for a total of seven million, one hundred thousand. Any general comments? Want to make a motion?
I have a question.
Yeah, please.
Could you tell us where the new sidewalks are going in?
So, uh, right now we're looking, we're focusing on, um, behind the Y at present. So we've got that look, um, primarily Putnam Road. All right, it's a very, it's a lot of money for the entire area behind the Y. So at present, we're looking at Putnam Road all the way down, all the way up from White Oak Shade to Surrey to South Avenue, because that's, uh, if you count that as your collector or your arterial, that's where every student and everyone's walking to, to get to wherever they want to go. So they, everyone has to cross that sidewalk. So feeling is we'll do those first and then branch out down Butler, Danvers, Whiffle Tree. And then if it's decided to go elsewhere, say up Conrad, then that would be a decision for, and then that would subsequently be next year. And then we have other areas that we're working on in the downtown area and then elsewhere. We have a couple of connectivity issues on Seminary Street, if you will. It's like two spots on Seminary that we're designing, things of that nature. So that the primary focus right now is, is, uh, behind the Y and then, um, on Farm Road on the opposite side where we did one side of Farm to do the other side of Farm on the Saks side, if you will. So from the driveway off of Farm Road up to South Avenue, that stretch is, uh, is in need as well.
Well, that's a lot. So we did get a letter about a one oh six sidewalk near Bristow. Is that, is that still under discussion or?
So the, so there's two stretches of sidewalk on one oh six. There's a stretch from Park to Bristow, which, uh, was approved by the Board of Selectmen a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago, I'm quite certain. That was to get to, to Bristow with a little bit of a pull off for part of the, uh, the Bristow celebration, if you will, in September. Hopefully everyone make it September eighth, I think it is. And then there's a subsequent piece from Bristow to Gower. That's actually funded through ARPA funds at present and that's under design, if you will. So it's, uh, survey work and then design work and we're looking at designing both sides of the street. I'm kind of attacking it similar to what happened on Main Street, right? So the council at the time in twenty twelve asked us to design both sides of the street to see exactly what would fit and what would work better. Uh, so we're going to design one, not that we would build one on both sides of the street, but we would see which would be the better fit, if you will. And then come back for further discussion at this body, police commission, and then ultimately to the Board of Selectmen. But that's under design at present.
Included in this three hundred thousand?
That's not the three, it's completely separately funded through, through ARPA.
Okay.
At the three hundred thousand dollar level.
Oh, sorry. I, I just wanted to get some clarification, uh, on the traffic calming dash rotary slash intersection improvements. Can you clarify what the status of that project is and is it set in stone that it would be a rotary, which seems to go against what the people who spoke today is requesting? Or are there other options in the, in the works?
There, so.
Is this the Conrad Road or Conrad Whiffle Tree? I guess that's the.
Part of this is Conrad Whiffle Tree and part of this is Carter and Canoe.
Oh, part is Carter and Canoe too, okay.
So the, uh, but the overall thought is nothing set in stone.
Yep.
If you will. So we asked the traffic consultant, Hardstein Hanover, to do a, an analysis. This is dating now back. It started off as an intersection improvement problem from a number of years ago, prior to the volume and speed issues that developed post COVID and, and that were, that we're experiencing now or the residents are experiencing now. So it started off as an intersection improvement, uh, project because of Whiffle Tree entering Conrad. Okay, and it's a quite a wide intersection. If you've been there, you see it's very, very wide and there's a problem with right of way. You know, who actually has the right of way. And while Whiffle Tree has a stop sign, it's not necessarily noticeable for everyone and people tend to roll through it. And it was, was, uh, we were getting complaints from the residents that they were having near misses and, and, uh, an issue. So we started to take a look at the intersection itself. And there was a couple of thoughts. There was one which was to make Conrad primary and Whiffle Tree secondary, meaning to narrow the intersection down and make it in essence a T intersection. It's the most efficient and then, and then it's kind of a, it's an, it's like a triangle, if you will. Because it's both, they have wide sweeps across the entire intersection itself. So the thought was to then narrow down Whiffle Tree and make Conrad primary. During that discussion or during that development, if you will, that study, we were presented with the fact that Conrad was experiencing heavy volume and speed issues. If you make Conrad primary at that point in time and Whiffle Tree secondary, you would exacerbate that problem because you would just be moving traffic through further, if faster, if you will, because we just say, okay, you're, you have the right of way. It's delineated and everyone would be speeding around the corner. So the thought was, well, let's go back and take a further look at it. So that's when we looked at what other options are there to try to tackle all three. Very, very difficult to tackle all three because they all three have different aspects to it. Volume is very, very difficult because one, the ways is telling people to get off the inner, uh, Mayor Parkway. Two, the DOT is telling people to get off the Mayor Parkway because it signals ways that there's a backup, so ways signals people to get off. And then we have a speed issue and then intersection safety issue. So as you know, we went through the iteration of, you know, blockading it off that, that didn't last very long. Even though it might have had, uh, some benefit to it, it, it didn't last and we took it out because of residential complaints. And then we started looking at what would necessarily help us tackle two of the three, meaning intersection safety and some speed and then possibly some volume. Because if you make it inconvenient for someone to go around, if you will, they might seek an alternate route. And then we were subsequently looking at the intersection of Gertie's and South Avenue at the traffic light. So there's two separate studies going on, one for the intersection of Conrad and Whiffle Tree and one for the intersection of South Avenue and Gertie's. South Avenue and Gertie's, we determined our, our Hardisty and Hanover determined that that traffic light was actually not functioning properly. So we asked the DOT to go out and fix it. They went out and fixed it and put in a three hundred and sixty degree camera to help it function the way that they had it timed. Okay? We also studied further whether or not that timing should be tweaked, okay, to better give, give a little bit more time to the leg of Gertie's to try to clear Gertie's. Because what's happening is people backing up on Gertie's and then coming up Conrad because they can come up Conrad to South Avenue, bang a quick left because there's virtually no traffic between the two traffic lights, South and Farm and South and Gertie's. Bang a quick left, quick right, a turn on red and they're on the, they're, they're on their on ramp to the Mayor Parkway. So the thought was if we can clear more cars through Gertie's, it would then not have people come through Conrad. So we did, we finalized our traffic study in December of twenty-three. And then reviewed it in-house and then sent it on to the state for their approval. The unfortunate thing with that is that we were asking for a nine second change of legs, not to get too technical, but a nine second change in the legs. The district itself, the district engineers in charge of traffic can only do three seconds, maximum of three seconds. Anything more greater than three seconds has to go to Newington, to the headquarters. So it's on its way to the Newington headquarters. While we got a favorable review, initial review from the DOT District Three, that's the district we're in. It's still got to go to Newington. So they're looking at that at that point in time. Whether they agree with us or not agree with us, we don't know. We gotta, that's the traffic light. Yes, that's the traffic light. Now, if we, if we're successful there, the thought is that might alleviate a lot of the volume problem. Might not necessarily get rid of the speed because people are still going to drive on Conrad, you know, and feel that it's a cut through and it doesn't address the intersection safety. So we're back down to two out of the three. So now we're working towards that. We didn't get a, you know, we got an email from the DOT that said, thank you very much for your traffic study and we'll get back to you. And I answered, I'm sorry, but I spent ten thousand dollars on a traffic study. I expect to have a meeting prior to a review, right? Because I think that that we're, it's warranted. We spent the money. You should listen to our presentation and then go to your review. Don't review it and tell me, you know, if you will. So we're, we're waiting for an answer back on that. So that's really, we're trying to tackle that portion of the volume and see exactly if that takes rid of the volume, takes care of the volume, then we don't have a volume problem anymore. We just have a speed and, and, uh, intersection safety. So the thought is to put in a mini roundabout. It's one of the ideas, okay?
What are the other ideas that you're, that are?
The other idea is to try to make it a three-way stop. If you will, you would still have to configure the intersection slightly different to make it so that it looks like a peace sign, if you will. Okay, you know, three legs coming in because we, we kind of shed to one way or another. You'll, you'll make that leg dominant. So there is that thought that we have to still kind of look at that intersection from that standpoint. The roundabout itself, right now, they're just sketches, if you will, right? So he gave us a preliminary design, a sketch, and he gave us two separate ones. One was a, a very large one that took up the entire right of way and I thought was not in keeping with the, the neighborhood, if you will. And then we said, well, let's try to do one that just fits on the pavement, if you will. You know, it fits with the, we don't have to expand the pavement at all. Okay, the thought being that's the minimum we could go. So right now we're in that middle phase of trying to figure out what's the minimum, what's the maximum? The maximum doesn't work, the minimum might not work. Maybe there's a middle ground in there to try to then make the legs on the side, you know, as it bows out around the circle itself, a little bit wider to then make you slow down. So when speaking to the traffic consultant today, he feels that for the traffic that's heading from, from Gertie's through Conrad to South Avenue, that will go around the largest leg of that roundabout and definitely slow speeds. Okay, if you will, coming around and then they'll have to then accelerate. And the feeling is that possibly from the residents that they're going to accelerate from that point to the end. That's a little bit more difficult, right? I can slow them down at the intersection, slowing down intermittently, a little bit harder, right? You get into some other things where we could put in white lines, edge lines. Jeff Speck mentioned that. You can kind of narrow the road kind of visually. We can put in a sidewalk which then narrows the road as well, just visually, not necessarily the pavement width, but it does give you an additional element for the, for the resident. What you want to do is you, what they call, you want to create chaos, right? So you want to create uncertainty for the driver. Uncertainty creates lower speeds, lower rights, because you're, you're uncertain, you're, you know, so you're uncertain, you slow down. So that's the thought there. So we're looking at, and while it's correct that as you're heading from South Avenue down and around the, the leg, that, you know, since it's a dog leg and you put the circle in the middle, this portion of it, that portion coming from South Avenue to Gertie's, you necessarily wouldn't slow everyone down through there. You would a little bit as you go through that curvature, but that's also not our primary problem. Our primary problem is heading in the opposite direction, if you will. So we're trying to tackle all elements, you know, so I, and, but right now we're, we're, we're at a stasis point because I'm waiting for a survey, right? So we got the survey approved by the Board of Selectmen. He'll go out and he'll do the survey. RKW will perform the survey and then we'll have data, pure data as to exact extent of the roadway, exact topography, if you will. The drainage, you know, characteristics, because that's all considered inside that roundabout. Right now, we just have a test fit of a, of a, of a roundabout whereby the traffic consultant feels that, yes, that will slow speeds and yes, it will, you know, possibly help us with volume, possibly, okay, because it's just inconvenient, but volume is a different element. And then, like I said, then the thought is to go in a three-way stop. His feeling on a three-way stop is that people might not necessarily adhere to the stop sign. So if they don't adhere to the stop sign, but there's an expectation of that you're adhering to the stop sign, that is problematic for the other drivers or pedestrians in the area. It's also problematic from my standpoint that if I start asking people or, you know, if I say, well, it's okay that you cruise through this one, but I really want you to stop at that one. That starts to send mixed messages to the resident or to the motorist itself, right? Because you, you know, you get into the situation of, I cruised through this one, I cruised through that one and, you know, I have one in my neighborhood that I cruise through, if you will, right? Then I come to one that's a definite stop and you have to stop. And I find myself almost cruising through that one because I cruised through the last one, if you will. You know, the one off of my cul-de-sac, I'd be perfectly honest with you, coming off my cul-de-sac, I know that I can see four hundred feet on either side, there's sidewalks, I can see everything. You know, so you can cruise through it. But then the next one, it's four-way and it's tight, you know, and I wind, I find myself creeping out. Well, that's, that's human nature. So we're trying to avoid that, if you will. So the traffic engineer is feeling that that might not necessarily work, but he's willing to then study and take a look and see if we can't narrow down each of the legs and turn it into a three-way stop.
So that's ongoing.
That's ongoing.
If this item were to get cut, and I actually didn't know that Carter and Canoe was included.
I forgot to, so.
But I appreciate knowing that now because that's also a very weird turn and I live over there. But, um, if this got cut now, if we cut the one fifty, where are we? Like?
If I don't have a.
What will you have and what will we not?
Problem I have is I don't have a path forward, right? So I don't have a, I don't have, so I would be stuck where do I proceed with the design that I have or do we just cut and run, if you will, you know, stop him at his track? And whatever we spent at present, we stopped with.
How much have you spent so far?
Around five thousand dollars of the current monies, give or take seven thousand, I believe. I'd have to look again. But that would be, and it's also problematic for the Canoe-Carter area, which is another area of concern. So it would be problematic, if you will, to, to, um, to cut it at that point in time because it's a, I, I wouldn't have. If I don't have a goal inside, I get eight, about eight thousand projects I got to do. If I don't have monies associated with the next step, I might necessarily, you know, start to look at other areas. Hardisty and Hanover have other work that they're doing for us and I might shift to that work and not focus on this. So that's, you know.
Essentially, the studies would wrap up, but they're, what you have there is what you're going to have for at least the next year or two or.
Well, the, the, so the, the thought is too, is that the, the, um, it has a long road ahead of it, if you will, right? Whatever occurs. So the thought being is that the, um, if, if it comes back and the designer says, you know, the mini roundabout works, right? So it's a traffic calming initiative. By our traffic calming guidelines, um, we actually have to go to the residents and then get a sixty-seven percent yes vote from the residents to actually proceed, okay? You get a fifty percent to say, go study it, sixty-seven percent for implementation. Because the implementation measure actually has a secondary thing where if they want it to be removed, they got to pay for it. That's in the regulation, right? We've never done that before, but that's part of it. So like if you put in a speed hump and people didn't like to speed hump and then wanted it out later, well, there's a caveat that says you asked for it, you get to pay for its removal, if you will. So there's a sixty-seven percent thing that's got to go, still got to go to the police commission for approval. I would still want it to come back to the council for, you know, we had a public hearing at Main Street, you know, we, yeah, well, it's not say to that level referendum, if you will. It's still very important to the residents, it's important to our department, important to the police department. So we would want everyone to have a time to speak and speak for or against. So we have a little bit, we have a lot of hurdles that we got to go through. Even an introduction of a three-way stop might cause us to have to go to Office of State Traffic Authority. I don't know. I got to look back on the regulation. It's speed limits and stop signs. It might be speed limits goes to ALSA and just stop sign stays with us, but since we're stopping the entire intersection, not just one stop sign, I got two and I'm changing the intersection and might have to go to them as well. So they'd have to go and opine on that design also. So it's got a lot of legs associated with it moving forward. It's just a question of right now, we'd be in a stasis point and I wouldn't know what to tell the designer, like a forward or not go forward. Right now, I said, listen, you know, give me an idea of what it would be to study a three-way stop, if you will. You know, give a, give a first. Like a forward or an aqua forward, right now, I said, listen, you know, give me an idea of what it would be to study a three-way stop, if you will, you know, give a, give a further look at a three-way stop. Cause we originally looked at a three-way stop and it was problematic a, at that point in time. For that reason, for kind of rolling through, but to take another look at it, you know, that's a couple of thousand dollars, I believe, he'll, he'll let me know. And then we go and look at both options and then see what would be according to the traffic engineer would be best. From the issues that we're being presented with, you know, we're trying to be very cognizant of. Uh, aesthetics, and if you looked at the renditions, you know, that were out there. There's one kind of where he kind of takes a picture of the intersection and then puts, puts a part of the traffic and then kind of fills it, if you will. Just puts the hump out and then fills in the. The sweeps and the, and the dividers, the splitter islands, and it's actually, you know, it's, it's as nice as, as aesthetically pleasing as a calming measure can get, if you will, right? So he tried to try to show you exactly what it would look like. In practice, if, you know, to try to give you a rendition, so that's in there, it's, it's just a question of, you know, at that point, we're, we're, we're trying to, you know. Satisfy this three-legged stool and this three-legged stool is very, very difficult to satisfy.
Okay, changing.
I have a comment on that too. So I think. I think the neighbors aren't liking the idea of the traffic circle and honestly, I feel like a traffic circle continuously moves where a stop sign stops. You don't have to stop in a traffic circle, I believe you can.
See yield.
You yield, right, but the stop is a stop and there's a lot of kids there, so I, I, I'm concerned about that. And I think the volume and the speeding people are probably one of the same, I'm guessing. People that are going fast or cutting through, did we ever consider a no left-hand turn out of Conrad onto South?
Not at present, the, the problem that we have with those is that they're, they're. They're difficult to enforce, so you would, you would wind up saying the exact same thing as kind of rolling through a stop sign, right? No left turn. If the officer isn't there.
So you parked someone there. I mean, I, I feel like that might cut out.
Could we use cameras for that? I mean, if you, I've seen places with a no left-hand turn during like seven to nine in the morning or four to six during rush hour. With a camera, that would be a less affordable, more affordable solution.
At present, we, we, uh, the state is now allowing. Camera enforcement, I don't know if it's for turning movements. I know it's for stoplights and for other areas, but that's a, that's a. Discussion for almost another day because that's has to be adopted, has to be studied by the police department and by our department to see, well, you know, what ramifications there are. There's a lot of associated with that new legislation. And then it would actually require an ordinance, so we'd actually have to come back to this body for that, and I don't know of turning movements. I, I haven't looked at it fully, but I don't know if turning movements are things that would be, um, enforceable via camera. Most of these are for stoplight infractions and, and other, and speeding and things to that in. Problematic areas, uh, problematic neighborhoods, and you can't necessarily blanket the town with them, you have to be very specific on where you want. And you have to be very specific on that specificity. I don't.
Sounds like an interesting idea. Is there any way that ways can be contacted? In all seriousness, because it is a safety issue. I mean, no, I've heard that they've done that with Google. Certain residents have gotten to get, I don't know what the procedure is, but there's some procedure that they, they say, take it off of, take our street off of ways or take it off of Google.
That's, that sounds like a.
Turn coming out of Conrad onto South, then it would no longer route people that.
Yeah, exactly.
Can I ask you another question though about the, the roundabout? I'm just curious. Um, because I was at the Jeff Speck, and I really appreciate the people clearly and, and you also suggested. You know, there's opposition to that. I can't remember, but I thought someone asked him at that, um, lecture. About roundabouts and he was talking about in the UK and he was saying there are studies that say they really do work. So can you elaborate on that? Like why the perception is that they don't, but.
It's change, if you will. So if you, if you look at, you know, overseas or, you know, in the UK or in other areas of the. Of the country, if you will, that's being adopted, the state actually now. For a long period of time was not in favor of roundabouts, then they studied it and now they actually have an initiative to try to put in a hundred a year. If you will, on their intersections, okay, they're in, they're stop-controlled intersections or a traffic-like controlled intersection, so they're actually now. Fully on board with that idea because the, uh, the contact points, if you will, the points of conflict change, okay? For that, whereas traffic lights, you have multiple areas of conflict and in this case, a three-way stop, you have multiple areas of conflict. Whereas if you're routing everyone around in the same direction, your points of contact and your, your points of conflict reduce.
It's for like the layperson, there's evidence that it, it does slow down. So is there, I mean, maybe that's it.
I think that's like a PR question and I think the question before us, just, just not to cut anybody off, but like. Is this a project that is worth funding forward? Right? Or do we want to stop and have it be stasis there? Because if we don't, if we don't fund, like, we're not traffic engineers, so I don't think that that's for us to decide whether a roundabout or a three-way stop to debate that tonight seems. Like, I, I think the important question is, like, is this worthy of continuing funding for, or do we want to stop and say, nah, you know?
Well, I, I'm speaking as a resident and somebody who's spoken to Janelle and Renee. Before and a, a resident who travels on those roads every single day several times a day. And I'm not a traffic engineer, but it sounds like the study that we have so far has indicated either a rotary or maybe a three-way stop. I'd like that study, and if we're funding a study to evaluate traffic control, I'd like that to include signage. All the possible signage that could be put on Gertie's and Conrad to slow people down. There are signs that will slow people down. There are signs you can put up that will notify ways that this is probably not a great way to divert people. I wanted to include the, the study of speed humps or speed bumps. I know I've heard before that. Those denigrate the, the property value in the area, but I've seen no denigration of property values on Stephen Mather Road in Darien, those are gorgeous homes. And I'm sure they're still selling at high prices and they have very manageable speed humps and bumps. That Plous can get over, I'm sure. So I, I, the idea about, um, cameras. I want the study to include a, a look at cameras and what that would cost and how effective that would be. I don't want. A study to come back to us and we all of a sudden have to vote on, all right, it's gonna be a rotary or not a rotary. I'd like to see a study that has six or seven different options. If we're going to fund a study, the study should be thorough and, and I want to see all those different options because. Stop signs, and, and we can't just say, well, it's human nature, they're gonna roll through. For that reason, we wouldn't put up stop signs anywhere. We, we've gotta, we've gotta look at, I think we've gotta look at a more thorough evaluation of everything that we're considering there before we just go. With the number one thing recommended, which is a rotary, and I'm not an expert and I can't say a rotary is a bad idea. I just want to be more thorough.
Well, and that's, that, that'd be the question, right, Tiger? When, when they came back with the rotary, did they?
It's a roundabout, it's not a rotary.
I'm sorry.
They're different.
No, you're right, actually, because I, I went through a roundabout and Nora walked, I thought it was pretty cool, but I, I'm not an engineer either. But the point is, the, 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 uh, consultants that have come back. Did they just, like, did they thoroughly vet all these other options and then came up with this recommendation or? Like, what, how extensive was there?
Let me, thanks Rita, let me just. Before you answer. I love this discussion, as everyone knows, I live over there, so this is, I mean, literally, it's a tremendous problem, Eric and I live next to each other, it's tremendous and. All these points were awesome, we've definitely spent like twenty-five minutes on this particular issue. I want Tiger to address these two points that, uh, Eric and Rita raised about the scope of the study only. That is, this just like give us something about the rotary and potential stoppage, you know, so, uh, stop sign. Just respond to that and we gotta make, we gotta move on, we can either choose to fund at least this study or not. We gotta move it on, happy to have another discussion at another point in time.
Wouldn't it be both, like, the money and the study?
Well, we're funding a study, that's all we're doing here is funding, and plus there's the other issue with the, the other intersection here, so.
It's only, it's only one hundred and fifty thousand.
To clarify, the one hundred and fifty is for a study?
No, no, I'm already doing it.
I didn't think it was, yeah.
No, I'm already doing a study.
So this is intersection parcel studies and improvements, that has nothing to do with.
That's separate, totally separate. Those are four separate intersections and then the parcel studies are surveys that we're looking to do. That's, that's a completely separate incident, yeah, those are actually, uh, state-owned traffic lights.
So, so just to get back to then Hillary's point and then Mike's desire to move this forward. We want to approve keeping the hundred and fifty and to solve this problem. Is that how we are looking at this?
Yeah, and we expect that not, not, we would expect like a fulsome report that addresses. A variety of options, not just comes back with a conclusion of one way or another or two ways.
Well, it should be a recommendation, but yes.
Yeah. Oh, no, obviously it should be a recommendation.
So the hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not funding a roundabout?
Not today.
The hundred and fifty thousand dollars was for construction of a traffic calming initiative. At this location and at Canoe Hill and Carter. The traffic calming initiative, what it would be, was not decided upon. That's what we're studying at present. If you'd like me to expand the study to the other areas of concern that you've had. I can certainly have a discussion with the Board of Selectmen and see if they will, you know, help me fund that portion.
I just want the study to be as, as thorough as possible.
We can certainly look at that, the, uh, but this money is, were, since we were already in the study phase, was more for implementation. Not for further study, but we can certainly look at further study and then implementation combined, if you will. If that answers your question.
So is everybody clear on what this hundred and fifty K is for? If not, it's okay.
Right, but the implementation, just so, just so you understand, if it's a traffic calming initiative, it has to receive sixty percent. Of the vote of the neighborhood and the way, you know, if we define, it depends upon how, where we would want to define the neighborhood. But at a minimum, I'm looking at, you know, the extent of Conrad and Whiffle Tree from Danvers, if you will, because that's everyone who can see it. And it's directly adjacent to their neighborhood. If it's determined by the police commission to ask for Gertie's and for behind the Y. Then we'd expand it if we will, but you know, the, my initial thought when I was, when I spoke to the police chief and the deputy chief and the captain was, listen, at least. All of Conrad and then from Conrad on Whiffle Tree, at least to Danvers, because that's the first leg and you can see it from everyone's house at that point, right? So that's, it's a direct effect of those people to try to choose the neighborhood, but it still has that aspect. If it fails that. Marker, if you will, we'd have to look further. So if the traffic engineer comes back and says. My number one is a roundabout, say, and they say, well, we don't want that. Second one is a three-way stop, but these are the problematic portions of, and the police commission said, we don't want that because of the problematic portion of it, then I'm looking at it, something else. We'll continue to study it, you know, it's about where I'm at, but we, I can't go, I won't. I personally would not be going forward without approval from the residents, Board of Selectmen, this body and the police commission, this is not gonna happen.
I think that's, at least as far as the town council is concerned, that we don't have a discussion six months from now and say, okay, we're putting in, you know, a rotary. Because I don't think that would be.
No, at that point in time, I could even bring the traffic engineer here to have him present all of his findings.
All right, let's move it along, let's get this vote. Uh, any other questions on any non-voter.
The ADA improvements town-wide, what does that include?
In, we, uh, we are in our final negotiations with the, the DOJ at present, sorry. And part of that is, uh, those improvements and then others that we see as necessary. We, we, at present, don't have to redo anything that we've done. But we, there are areas of, uh, deficiency throughout town that, given the light of what we've. Received from the DOJ, we would like to tackle those as well.
Okay, does this include a ramp for the playhouse?
No.
No?
No.
Is that part of the project for the playhouse?
No, it's a, it's a, it's a subset thereof whereby we, uh. Given the fact that the playhouse lot is inaccessible. Uh, we need to find an accessible route for it, the best accessible route for it would be to go down the stairs and, and out to Elm Street. If you will, because that's where everyone theoretically wants to go. Um, plus then it would help us with, um, accessible parking for the playhouse. Playhouse is in the golden circle, so it technically doesn't need parking, but at the same time, it needs parking, accessible parking, so it's. While it's not part of the playhouse, it's, we should do it because of the playhouse.
Where's the money coming from?
That'll be either, uh, subsequent from parking lot improvement and sidewalk improvements, if you will.
That are in this budget?
They are, uh, some are in this budget, some are in a previous budget, yeah. For parking lots, per se. It's because it's a parking lot improvement, it's a very difficult scenario, it's a parking lot improvement, it's also a sidewalk improvement, if you will, so it's kind of part and parcel. So I was trying to, um, use both funds to take care of that.
Right, my understanding had been all along that the, the handicap ramp was part of the playhouse and was presented as part of the playhouse.
No, it was adjunct to it, but not part of the work itself.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I still would like to see the DOJ document with the, um, handicap accessibility.
Yes.
I have one really cool question about sidewalks and just a clarification, so you say, because there's a lot of new sidewalks, which is awesome.
Well, the replacements, not necessarily, they're new, but there are replacements thereof.
Yeah, so when you say sidewalks, improvement and new, does that mean, so new ones that are coming up, I get that, improvements are, are you just fixing stuff that is already like. Sidewalks that need, need to be fixed.
It's now, new is new, okay, meaning like it wasn't there before and now it's here.
Yeah, I get it.
Improvements are everything, meaning a replacement, if you will, or a repair. So in the downtown area, I've got a lot of repairs that they need to do of the brick sidewalk and things of that nature, or handicap ramp here, handicap ramp there. Things of that nature, so that's the improvements portion. Uh, that's stuff behind the Y, that's an improvement, right? It's a reconstruction, but it's not necessarily new. Seminary where there isn't one, that's new. It's the only way I could truly define it.
So as we have more and more sidewalks, we can anticipate there is going to be more of this improvement in, in the budget going forward.
As we add, we have, well, everything we've added at present, you wouldn't be looking at for a twenty-year lifespan. Because the majority of them are concrete, if you will, so the majority of the work that we have to do is in our existing network. We have nineteen miles of sidewalk in town. So that, there are, there is in the P O C D, the twenty fourteen P O C D, there's approximately four million dollars of. What you would consider to be new sidewalk, proposed new sidewalks that we will tackle as we can. Some of them are under design. Lakeview Avenue, if you will, from Main Street to Milport, that's under design. The portions on Seminary Street are under design, there's a couple of other areas of concern. From residents.
It sounds like there's a plan.
There is a plan, yeah.
Thank you.
Right, if you look at the twenty fourteen P O C D, it actually highlights out the areas where we should be looking and targeting. And I met with SLR this, this afternoon about sidewalks and, and mapping and what our plans are going forward and. We're working towards that for, for the twenty twenty-four P O C D going forward.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right.
You want me to make a motion for seven?
Number seven, okay. Grant, would you like to make that motion?
I would love to make that motion. A resolution authorizing an appropriation of seven million, one hundred and thou- one hundred thousand dollars. For the DPW Administration and Engineering twenty twenty-four project and the fining. Financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general, general obligation bonds of the town and notes. In anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed seven, one hundred thousand dollars.
Hillary seconds, any discussion?
It's not, it's not a question, it's just. So the residents can expect options and choices and a vote going forward about Conrad situation. That's what I just want to clarify.
Yes.
All right, that was a good question. All right, here we go, ready to vote? All in favor? Okay, the vote passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving along. DPW Highway and Transfer Station twenty twenty-four program. What's the WD stand for?
Wheel drive, two-wheel drive.
Two-wheel drive, dump sander truck, two hundred seventy-five thousand, pickup truck, ninety thousand, leaf collection system, eighty-five thousand, wheeled loader. Two hundred seventy thousand, forklift, forty thousand. Any question? Well, let's get the motion, all right? So someone make the motion on number eight. Okay, Penny made the motion, Rita seconded, Penny, would you please read the motion?
Resolution authorizing an appropriation of seven hundred sixty thousand. For the DPW Highway and Transfer Station two thousand twenty-four project. And the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town. And notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed, exceed seven hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay, um, so we have a second, is there any discussion on that motion? Having no discussion, we'll now vote, all in favor. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, number seven, the DPW Parks 2024 Program. Field improvements, 60,000. Irrigation, sorry, irrigation upgrades, 100,000. Exterior wall reconstruction, 100,000. Fence backstops replacement, 60,000. Lightning detection system, 100,000. Nature Center Pond dredging, 250,000. Waveney Park Conservancy, 300,000. Vehicles with accessories, 85,000. Articulating loader, 65,000. Parks maintenance vehicles, 84,000, for a total of $1,204,000. Can someone make the motion on number 10?
I will.
Eric makes the motion.
Nine.
Nine, sorry, number nine. Okay, Eric made the motion, Luke seconded. Uh, Eric, can you read the full motion?
Move to resolve authorizing an appropriation of $1,204,000 for the DPW Parks 2024 Project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $1,204,000.
Okay. Any discussion? Having no discussion, we'll vote, all in favor. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, Capo Field 2024 Program. Capo Field, $6,500,000 for a total of $6,500,000. Do you have a motion?
I'll move.
Hillary will make that motion, we'll have a second. Maria will second, so if you could just make a motion.
Sure. Move to adopt resolution authorizing an appropriation of $6,500,000 for the Capo Field 2024 Project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $2 million.
Okay, we'll open this up for discussion.
Yeah, I have a question. I, my understanding was that this was something that was in process for a long time prior to my joining Town Council. At least thoughts about it or plans for it. And I don't know if that's a correct assumption or not, or if this is something that has just come before this body more recently. Can somebody just clarify that for me, and then I'll go forward with a question?
This has been under study for quite some time.
Yeah.
Both at Capo and at other locations.
Yes.
So yes, your answer is, it's been under study and, um, a want or a need, thanks, Mike, um, for a long period of time. We had actually looked at doing one over by the girls softball field, if you will, and it became problematic with the Tennessee Gas Line, Texas El Paso Gas Line. So that got, um, scrapped at that point, then they started looking at Capo. The N C A F commissioned a master plan by Richter and Seegan. 2018, thank you, I was close, I was 17, but the, uh, 2018, and that envisioned the Capo Field, um, reconstruction, if you will, at that time. So it's been in the works since at least, uh, that time, and the, uh, varsity baseball field, if you will, a turf varsity baseball field predates that by at least six, seven years.
And is, is the beautiful field at Mead Park not a varsity field?
It is a varsity field.
It is a varsity field. So the reason for the impetus behind Capo is to have a varsity field that is better, nicer, more usable, closer to the high school? Is that the prime driver?
Correct, a synthetic turf, right? The, the field at Mead.
The infield at Mead is all synthetic?
No. So, no, the, the small fields, the Gamble and Melick are, the infield is turf and the outfield is grass. Those are the two, the 60-foot diamonds.
And neither of those is, is a varsity field?
No, no, it's a 90-foot diamond.
So that, that beautiful field with the scoreboard out there and the fencing and the turf infield and the grass outfield, that's not a varsity field?
You're talking directly across from the, if you're standing.
Yeah, you walk out of the apple cart.
And you look straight across?
And you walk straight into the dugout and that, that field right there, that is not a varsity field?
No, those are for 12 and under.
The varsity field has a tree in the outfield.
Uh, then I'm mistaken about what that field is, and.
What's that?
It's on your left.
On your left, that's the varsity field at present. It's all grass.
So now, just think about this, is that you're at a varsity game and, um, I'm a big baseball fan, my whole life I played, but they look up to the, the high school and, and you're sitting in the outfield, and you're on the fence, and like, there's things poking through, and you look to the right, and you have those two absolutely stunning, gorgeous fields for the younger generation of baseball, and then you graduate into a high school baseball field that has seven trees in the outfield. Trees.
Obviously, I didn't have kids who played varsity baseball, because I didn't know which fields were which, but, uh, this, this clarifies an awful lot for me, and that was not clear to me before, so, pardon my ignorance, but thank you.
Thank you.
So I just want to say, I wasn't, I wasn't physically present at the last meeting when this was discussed, but, um, I look at our role sort of narrowly as, you know, does this make financial sense for the town? It's not for me to decide, you know, where this should be or where not. I, I think that there's a great deal of philanthropy in this town that we take advantage of and we all benefit from. I'm not a, I'm not a baseball fan, I love baseball, but my kid doesn't play, so I don't have a dog in the fight, I'm sort of agnostic about it, but to me, when, when you're, when we're asked to, you know, can we fund this or not, irrespective of the project, to me, this looks generally risk-free, since if I understand correctly, the way it works with New Canaan Athletic Foundation, which is a terrific organization, um, we don't put in any money, I mean, we authorize this now, but we don't put in any money until the donations come in, right? So we, it, it's, it, to me, it's sort of a risk-free proposition, and you don't have to love baseball or.
I love all sports, even though my kid.
I do too.
Yeah.
No, I do too, but I, but, but to me, that's not what this, what our conversation should, should necessarily be about. Again, I'm like, sort of a stay-in-your-lane gal, so I'm not gonna decide whether this is the appropriate project for the New Canaan Athletic Foundation to pursue. Like, that's for you to present to us what, what that should be, and that there's a demand for it.
I've been having me involved, and like, listen, I have three kids, um, that are involved in sports, and it's, it's, it's a socialization of what's happening, and I couldn't agree more 100% with Hillary is that, um, you know, we have, we have these kind of junior facilities, right, that are right next door to, um, the, the baseball high school field, and they're, they're living in two different worlds.
Yeah.
This is living in lights and scoreboard, and then we have trees, like, there's literally an oak tree in center field, and it's like, can I hit the third branch off that, because that guarantees me, and that, we're not, we're all joking, right? But, I mean, we're not joking, so like, um, I, I think a priority of, you know, this, the commitment of, um, the, there's been a lot of time, energy, and effort from my perspective, and, and knowing, you know, Brian Rogers and a lot of the people that are involved in baseball, um, that was put into this. And I think it's like, it's real, it's very concrete, it's, it's very hard. I know they came in with two and a half, and we pushed back, and I think we greeted 2 million, uh, which, which I wasn't in, in support of, but, you know, uh, you know, I did support moving forward, is, I, I think this is like, in, uh, the next extension and the next support level of like, having new Canadian baseball, be, be that destination location in, in the, in the tri-state area, in, in this location. And, you know, I think we've really set the stage, we've set the bar for a lot of different, um, organizations specifically for sports, and I think that this, that, from my perspective, and obviously I'm a sport person, so then I'm, I'm hearing the voices from that, there's huge amount of support for, for moving forward, and I think there's very low level of risk to moving this forward.
I mean, I, and I love sports too, I, but I consider this, just separately, you know, I think we have different, somewhat differing perspectives. I look at this particularly, like, specifically from a financial point of view, and what our job is and, and how we're to think about it. I don't love turf, I'll just come right out on the record and say, I really don't like turf, I'm unclear about whether it's harmful for kids to breathe in, it comes in my house and it's everywhere and it drives me crazy. Having said that, I'm certain that you've looked at, you've considered that and looked at whether or not it's healthy or, and made some determination that it's also unhealthy for my son, who plays sports, and my daughter, to, to not have an activity to do on the weekend or on weekdays, because it gets rained out all the time. So I understand that balancing, and I hope that that balancing has been done when it comes to us as a project. But I don't, again, I don't know that it's in my wheelhouse to, to judge that, my question is whether it's something that is good for the town, that we can support, and that doesn't have a ton of risk to us.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we all have a different way of looking at it, and I appreciate Luke's enthusiasm, and I appreciate Hillary's perspective. Um, I'd like to just shift a little bit, so I was asked by some softball moms, when they heard about this field, which sounds really exciting, because they play on a field that doesn't have very good drainage and it's very soppy and wet, um, will they be able to have access to this field during their season so that they could share it with the varsity baseball?
Access, my understanding is access to all of these fields is governed by the Fields Committee, and so the Fields Committee would have to answer that question specifically in-season, out of season. I think it's important to note, which I did in a few of my presentations, that while this is, yes, in the configuration of a baseball diamond, it is really an addition to, I forget exactly what the number was, but it was about 33% more additional turf for the complex up there, and that, in my view, representing all sports and community at the Athletic Foundation, is the biggest bottleneck that this town has, uh, from the youth level all the way up to the varsity sports. So, um, in theory, that plot of turf can be used for any sport. It can be used for flag football in the fall, it can be used for, um, you know, soccer in the, in the winter if they wanted to play. There's lots of configurations that it could be used for if you just view it as additional turf footprint, which is our biggest bottleneck.
I mean, I think it is called the varsity baseball field, though. So I, I'm in support of baseball, I love baseball, although I'm a Red Sox fan, don't anyone.
Get out.
But, but, sorry, I'm from Boston. But, but, anyway, so, since it is town funding, one of my concerns is the, the access that the girls have, like, is there any way that we could?
Can I make more comment on that, Mike?
Yeah.
Before you answer, and then you're gonna have an interview, is, go to the, the lacrosse and, and flag football fields. The, the, it's, there's a ton of like, people that want to access those fields. This is, the thing about this, this is giving an additional field of people that would have access, and we do have a lot to work through the scheduling aspect, but, I mean, we built all those turf fields for lacrosse and flag football and, and, and everything, and there's, everyone's always lobbying for that, those fields, this will just be an extension of that, and, and who, who doesn't want to, you know, play on a, on a very sophisticated field? But I think it's a, an extreme value add to the town and the organization.
I'll, I'll just answer this way.
Yeah.
This is Capo Field, just like you have Dunning Field, Water Tower One Field, Water Tower Two Field, Water Tower Three Field, and there are multiple sports played on all those fields. And again, the governance of how those get allocated is governed by the Fields Committee, who serves at the pleasure of the First Selectman's Office.
Is it the same configuration of varsity baseball field as a girls softball field? I don't know enough about it to know if it can be used for both. So, so it is strictly then?
In fact, I think a varsity girls softball field would prefer, and I think standard is a dirt skin infield.
Yeah, it was, it was my understanding that, um, girls softball's not gonna use this field, but it was, it was my understanding that, I mean, I've played, anyway.
I don't think they could play a varsity competition, although they could probably change the, the base configuration.
Yeah.
And it's a temporary mound, so, yeah, they actually could.
Maybe they could. Um, I was thinking, because when you had presented it originally, I, and I'm not saying anything against softball, I think it's great, but, but when you were first presented it, I thought it wasn't so much that the girls could use this field, but that you would possibly stripe it for use for maybe women's or girls, um, field hockey. And that was the sort of, like, one of the secondary uses potentially for it.
I, I think what I said was, this was going to be roughly 33% additional turf footprint that could be temporarily lined for multiple sports. It could be soccer, it could be girls field hockey, it could be flag football, it could be, the only permanent, uh, what do they call them, in?
It's cut-ins.
Cut-in lines is configured for a baseball field, just like the permanent cut-in lines at Water Tower One or for a football field, the permanent cut-in lines for Water Tower Two for soccer and girls lacrosse field. So there are permanent cut-in lines that you put in when you lay turf, but you can put temporary lines in, which we do for multiple surfaces, um, they're just chalk lines that fade away over time with, with weather.
Tom?
I just want to say that, um, we discussed with Michael about a month ago, when we started talking about Capo, wouldn't it be great to, um, organize some research to acknowledge where philanthropy had been used in town? And we thought, oh, this would be great. I think Tiger's reacting like, oh my God, that's a huge project, and that's the conclusion I've come to. When I talk to people about this, it's phenomenal how many buildings and facilities in our town were large, were to a great extent populated with, with philanthropy. And it's, uh, it's not just a, a nice thing to have, it's kind of like the backbone of the town, and it's part of the citizen's relationship with the town. So when someone comes up and says, through philanthropy, I'd like you to have a $6.5 million asset for $2 million, I think that's pretty attractive. So then I look at, well, what's the downside of it? And, you know, when I was growing up, I played a lot of, of baseball on a literal sandlot. So to me, Mead looks great, trees are not, but, but that doesn't mean I'm the expert to turn to you guys and say, you know, today you ought to play with trees and, and mud. If you're saying that, uh, that this gives the kids more playing field, it gives the, the town more appeal for the sporting community, and you're gonna do this and give us a $6.5 million asset for $2 million, I'm in.
All right, so, uh, my opinion is this is a home run for the town.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I.
Knock that out of the park, Mike.
I mean, I think we, we have to appreciate the, the philanthropy and the, and also the New Canaan Athletic Fund for bringing this forward. I want to make sure we, um, we show our gratitude, because I think it's, it's amazing that we can do this. And I think you guys, I had a bunch of questions that I had sent, um, kind of getting into the numbers, 6.5 million seems high to me, it still does, but here's the thing. $2 million is not half of 6.5. And if you guys wanted to put, if the New Canaan Athletic Fund wanted to do extra bells and whistles to make it 6.5 million, then that's frankly, great, like, that, that's great, if, if you want to do that. So I, I think $2 million is a, to your point, is kind of a bargain, um, to get something that, we're not funding half of it, we're funding, you know, a portion of it, and you guys are plusing it up the way you, you see fit, I think, I, I, I'm good with that.
Can I ask one question that I think was covered by the Board of Finance, and then we'll do the home run, and it'll be.
By the old way.
Your most preference for the home run?
Nothing. So if there's any further value engineering that's done, not to, again, putting on my, like, what can we pay for hat, if there's any more value engineering to bring it down, or it comes down from 6.5, will there be a proportionate reduction in the town's contribution, or are we authorizing 2 million regardless?
Yeah, if we were, authorizing 2 million, that's it, irrespective of they come down.
Well, there was discussion at the Board of Selectmen's that.
There, there was a discussion, but it wasn't a mandate. Michael Chen brought that up, it wasn't a mandate, it was a $2 million investment for the town. And then, there, it's, it would be very difficult for us to bring it down further. We brought it down from the 13 million down to the six and a half.
I know, but that's so incredible.
Right, there's, there's no real bells and whistles.
I think you can look at the dugouts and bring it down a little further, if you wanted to find an extra 500, just, just saying.
But.
That's up to you.
Yeah. No, I'm just asking about the proportionality, like, are we, are, and so that we all understand that, are we in for two, or are we in for whatever percentage two is of 6.5?
The thought was that the town was in for two.
Yeah.
Regardless.
That wasn't part of any conversation yet and the resolution is to approve an amount not to exceed $2 million, so we're authorizing $2 million if we vote in approval of this.
But isn't it also true though that we don't, we don't actually?
We don't have to spend the 2 million, just like there's special appropriations, I would imagine there'd be special cuts, but.
I think Hillary's point is no contract gets signed and no shovel gets put in the ground unless all the money's in the bank and all the money needs to be in the bank, which includes all the private dollars.
Yeah, and then just clarify, like, all of that, so that we're all comfortable with what the town, because I might have had a different idea about proportionality, so I just wanted to get that out.
But that's interesting too, is there a precedent in the past for how much the town has contributed when NCAF has come forward with a project? I mean, is there anything written in writing that says the town pays a certain percentage or that?
No, there's nothing that's written in writing, every project that's been done to date has been 50/50 roughly.
Well, what about Dunning turf originally?
Well, Dunning turf was 100% done by the foundation.
Right. Well, original Dunning was done 100% private and then the reskining, the recent reskining was done completely by the NCAF, that was like 700 grand?
750.
750.
So there's not a set rule, but the average is pretty favorable.
And here it's favorable, in the past, aside from that, it's been about 50/50.
Yeah, Water Tower One, Two, Three Track, it's all about 50/50 at that point.
Thank you.
All right, I think that concludes the discussion on this topic. Again, Mike, thank you to the NCAF, all of your team, I know it's a ton of work and it can get frustrating at times, but you're a dogged professional and I appreciate all the work and all the philanthropy that goes along with it. So let's give the, I think we've read the motion. Who made the motion?
Hillary and Maria.
All right, it was read, so let's get the vote on. All in favor? The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, when you write the resolution, why is there no mention of a public-private partnership or the fact that it's, the funds need to be in? Because we're approving appropriation of 6.5 million, part of it could come from the general fund, so it's very, it could be misinterpreted.
It's a project authorization, all our projects go into a specific fund, you have to approve the full project even though a portion of it's getting through donations because Tiger can't go ahead without the full six.
I understand.
So when we set it up, we set it up with the budget, once we have the money with that split, so we, there's no.
It's not really required on the resolution statement, then you were saying?
What says not to exceed 2 million?
Not to exceed 2 million, I'm not sure if I'm understanding then.
We'll talk afterward.
Okay, okay, yeah.
All of us language, I'm assuming has all been approved by our bond council.
Oh, this is all through bond council, yeah, appropriately.
All right, Schools 2024 Program, let me read this quickly. District Innovation Projects, $200,000. District Engineering Services, General, $160,000. District Engineering HVAC Assessment, $150,000. East Elementary Floor Tile Replacement, $250,000. East Elementary Masonry Restoration Repair Repoint Brick, $80,000. East Elementary Interior Improvements, Handrails, ACT Tiles, $200,000. East Elementary Playground Replacement, $67,500. South Elementary Masonry Bricks Restoration Repair Repointing, $125,000. South Elementary Window Repair Media Center and Main Office, $200,000. West Elementary Masonry Bricks Repointing Frames and Sweeps Repair, $100,000. West Elementary Fire Alarm System Panel and Device Replacement, $100,000. Saks Renovate Parking Lot and Car Repairs, $375,000. Saks Masonry Repairs Repoint Brick, $150,000. Saks Floor Tile Replacement, $250,000. Saks Roof Replacement Phase One and Two, $100,000. Saks Main and Auxiliary Gym Door Replacement, $125,000. Saks Hot Water and Chiller Water Pumps, $120,000, excuse me, SBD Transportation Vehicle Replacement Number One, $65,000. Vehicle Replacement Number Two, $65,000. Vehicle Replacement Number Three, $65,000. NCPS Painting and Interior Building Repairs, $260,000. SBD Maintenance Vehicle Replacement, $45,000 for a total of $3,252,500. Can we have a motion for number 11?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Rita makes the motion, second, Mike Morrow, okay, Rita, can you read the motion?
Resolution authorizing appropriation of $3,252,500 for the Schools 2024 project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $3,252,500.
Discussion? Having heard no discussion, all in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Okay. DPW Waste Water Treatment Program 2024, UV Replacement, $4 million, can we have a motion? Eric, second, Luke, okay, Eric, read the motion.
Motion to resolve. Motion to resolve authorizing an appropriation of $4 million for the DPW Waste Water Treatment 2024 Project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $4 million.
Discussion? All in favor? The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, last one, Bond Premium Usage. DPW Administration Engineering Tree Replacement, $25,000. DPW Highway Equipment Refurbishing, $25,000. DPW Highway Cemetery Maintenance, $25,000 for a total of $75,000. Can we have someone make the motion? Maria makes the motion.
Make the motion, I make the motion. Resolution.
Hold on, Luke, second.
Luke, second.
Absolutely second.
Resolution authorizing an appropriation of $75,000 for the Bond Premium 2024 Project and the financing of said appropriation by the allocation of bond proceeds on hand in an amount not to exceed $75,000.
Okay, discussion? Having heard no discussion, we'll move to vote, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can work out, Tiger. Good job.
That's it, right? There's nothing else? That's the end of our, so.
I have one thing, on appointments, I know we took care of voting on that earlier, but it does say in the agenda, and I want to make sure this is reflected correctly in a minute, says to confirm the appointment of Bill Bradley for a three-year term ending December 1, 2024. Okay, so he's fulfilling that. Oh.
He'll be back soon.
All right. Did not know that, thank you.
All right, so just one last point and we'll shut it down. So again, guys, I think everyone did a fantastic job, you know, getting educated in the budget process, I'm very, very happy with everybody's effort. So moving forward, we're coming out of our budget season, I'd urge everybody, watch the BOs meetings, watch the BOf meetings, you know, that's all a prelude to our meetings and like I said, you know, I nerd out, I listen to it when I can, if you can't, attend in person, just, that's how you get up to speed on everything that we're doing, so when we come in here, we're far more efficient because we're more educated and we can certainly pose any questions we need to the Board of Selectment or Board of Finance in advance just to keep our process moving as efficiently as possible. So again, thanks for your hard work.
I just had some feedback and we don't need to discuss this now.
Yeah, yes, please go.
I'm just going to say for, like, to tee it up.
Yes.
There was some comments regarding how we did a special committees and the cadence and the timing of that, that could have maybe been, that can be improved.
Yeah.
So I think we do need to talk about that.
What are you referring to?
In particular, the Board of Education, I got feedback from, actually Erica Schwedell, who is suggesting maybe a change in how those subcommittee meetings could be done. So we can talk about that another later date, but I do think if there's room for improvement, we should be.
Yeah, listen, and that's a point well taken and anybody, anyone has ideas about how to improve anything we do, bring it forward, Tom's already reached out to me on something I want to chat with him further about, any ideas, bring them forward, we can chat about it and let's continue to fine tune and calibrate our process, that's 100%.
So how do we do, I'm sorry, so?
Well, we could.
Is that for next, like, do we table it for next year and when we're bringing?
I know, I think we need to start coming up with, you know, reflection of our past budget season and I think we can all, you know, propose some adjustments and then if we want to have a public discussion about that, I think we get it on our agenda and we have a public discussion, a public needs to see it, 100%.
I don't know that there's like any rule or ordinance about the way the subcommittees need, so I don't even, I don't know why if the BOE Subcommittee decides that they want to change it up and there's no rule that specifies how it's supposed to be done, you could, you could just do that as a committee and report what you've decided to do to make it a more efficient process. Does that make sense?
Yeah, sure, that makes sense, yeah. Yeah, that's what I was asking, like, how do we go about doing that? So that makes sense, I just want to make sure it's like, you know, public that people know we're addressing that feedback and that it, you know, we're taking into consideration and that we're making a change.
100%, exactly, okay, great. All right, motion to adjourn?
Awesome.
We're done.
Good job, everybody.